Is audio recording tonight's meeting? We're gonna pilot a program. We're gonna try recording audio of our meetings and posting it on the website. So if anyone wants to make a public comment, maybe just request that you step up to the microphone over there so that you can get on the audiotape without any interference. Okay, Mrs. Hyler, can I have a little call, please?
Mr. Clarkin here.
Mr. Painter.
Here.
Mr. Redner.
Here.
Mrs. Face.
Here.
Mrs. Lyman.
Here.
Mrs. Waxler.
Here.
Mr. Zepos.
Here.
Mrs. Gil Calaskey.
Here.
Aiden Antet.
Welcome, everyone. The upcoming meetings are listed in your agenda and on the sideboard. We held two executive sessions, one on March 17th at 5:00 to discuss items in regards to the fence litigation, and one on April 6 during the Personnel Committee to discuss a personnel item. Mr. Zepos, would you like to give the finance report?
So, welcome. Mr. Zepos. Can you hear me? Super. We met on April 5, 8:00 AM. It was a very intense and extensive meeting, one of the line of great things. First off, we reviewed budget transfers for three things: special ed, high school, and the West Reading library. About $34,000 is being requested on the transfer. We also reviewed a donation, WAVE, for the Spartan Rises Up After Falling Down grant to purchase Domino's, not the pizza, but the actual Domino's, for the West Reading Elementary School. We then reviewed donations in memory of Michael Dicasadas in the amount of $580. There were nine total donors. These funds will be used to purchase basketball 1,000-point score batter. We got into an in-depth discussion, the request established a student activity account for the boys volleyball team. When looking at this, we realized that the girls volleyball team does not have student activity account, and sports teams that currently do have a student activity account include bowling and swimming. And I know we're still gonna be discussing some of the options with this on what we can do to support and support across the board and across the playing field, lack for a better word. We discussed several level agreements for the student management software and special education applications for the BCIU. This is about $45,387. This would be a 3% increase over the 2015-2016 agreement. We discussed this, again, we discussed the status of the copier lease. This keeps going. But again, it is a business of pennies, so, you know, it's actually kind of great savings. So we're working with five different companies to receive the best pricing possible. The scope of the project was slightly changed to include a less copier than in our current, one less copier than in our current fleet. In exchange for one less copier, we'd have higher speed machines, and they'll be placed in each building. Software and hardware will be placed on the machines to help control and reduce paper usage. I believe we can also track who's using it, who's actually letting their projects go rampant, so it allows us to probably monitor it so there's not excess waste of paper, print, et cetera, and time. Let's see. We're still waiting three more bids and hope to have a recommendation to the board at the next meeting in April. Our current lease expires in June. We've been talking about this for a while, but at the same time, I think every penny does count, so that was fun. We also discussed the status of the transportation contract. We discussed the terms of the next contract with Keystone Transportation Service, who I believe we've been using for a good amount of years. We discussed the terms and lengths of the current contract. We also discussed the new technology on the buses, whether it's GPS or different routes, et cetera. And we'll have another meeting set up in April to continue the negotiations. Our contract currently expires in June. And we discussed the 2016-17 budget and how to close the $1.2 million gap that we're currently in right now. I will say, I think when we started with this current board, it was a, I think we've already reduced that number almost by half. We are over the $2 million range right now. We're at about negative 1.2, so we are making progress. We did cover a lot of different options on how to reduce this debt and close this gap. Some options were, one, raise the taxes. We looked at different scenarios, different percentages. We looked at using fund balance that are committed for retirement contributions. We are looking at using one-time revenue drawdowns to help balance the budget. Bond refinings, savings and strategies. These were originally project to be saved towards potential building renovations. We even looked at energy savings. We looked at savings from a reduction to the projected increase in health care. We even looked at not filling one vacant position, and then the pilot program through the Reading Hospital. Some of the, some of the options came out in our favor and some didn't. So we, we're still discussing at length what we can do with that. We've discussed the impact of different levels of the tax increase on the budget. We looked at an increase of 2.4%, which is the index, and we also looked at an increase of 2 and an increase of only 1.1%. We did find out currently on Friday that we received an additional $9,300 in basic ed funding and about 27, right under $27,000 in special ed funding from the state, and we have incorporated that into the 2016-2017 budget. We discussed three, we discussed three projects, we discussed three projects, funding sources and also their potential budget impact. One was the STEM, maintenance of the STEM area, the tennis court renovation and rehab project, and the West Reading Technology Project. We also then reviewed the 15-16 cash flow. With the release of the additional state funds, we should be on target with the cash flow projections, so that's, that's a positive outcome of that. The only current outstanding issue is $70,000 that is due, that is reimbursed from the state for planned con construction projects. Planned con reimbursement to districts in one of the casualties of Wolf's veto for, of the state's fiscal code. And finally, we reviewed the 2015-16 projected expenditures and revenues. We are on a projected, we are projecting a surplus of about $240,000. And I think that's about all been covered in that very short meeting.
Right, very short.
Yeah. I think, I don't think I missed anything on that, right? Thank you.
Mrs. Face.
Thank you. We had a facilities meeting on April 6, which was also, like me, George, and discussed a lot of things. So first and foremost, we talked about the football field fence project. Since the original design of the fence didn't include keeping the tennis courts, the committee reviewed new plans for the football field fence that incorporate the new tennis court expanded design. The new fence plans have fewer columns and the structure is set back from the sidewalk six feet rather than the original plans of three. The new plans provide a cohesive design plan for the entire football field area and take into account suggestions from district personnel and district stakeholders. It is the recommendation of the Facilities Committee to apply for a permit for the new fence design. Tonight, there will be a vote for revising the plans. A second item we discussed was the facility's storage building and underground storage tanks. Mr. Capinselli received a quote for the project from AEM Architects that is not to exceed $150,000. That includes the removal of the underground storage tank, relocation of a diesel fuel tank that is in the sheds, the demolition of the existing sheds, and the construction of a new centralized maintenance building. This is a great, actually, opportunity for the maintenance guys to get out of that old wood shop and for us to go forward with the STEM program, which I think is just terrific for our curriculum. I think, is that on the agenda for tonight or is that just a session? In terms of, with a, okay, so we're still discussing that, thank you. Next thing we talked about was the tennis court renovation. Turf track and court is preparing bid documents, and they should be advertised by the end of next week. Another item was the district-wide cameras. Camera contractor, Low V, is about two weeks behind schedule right now due to some challenges at the high school that weren't totally unexpected. Programming the system will occur after installation, and there is a change order for additional cameras in West Reading that is up for discussion as well tonight. Another old business item was the cafeteria floor replacement. This project is completed, and the floors have been resurfaced and waxed. Last item under current projects was bus lot safety. Materials have been ordered, and installation of the new security lights will occur in the next couple of weeks. A couple of new business items that were discussed was a water heater replacement at the Hills. The water heater was assessed during the ESCO project last year, and it was found to be in satisfactory working order. After an inspection this March, a small leak was found in the hot water heater, and it'll need to be replaced. A water softener will also be installed with a new unit, excuse me, new unit, to minimize the effects of hard water in our area. The replacement will be installed over a weekend and shouldn't interfere with the school day. Environmental Club landscaping project, Mrs. Phillips and the Environmental Club would like to landscape the area on both sides of the steps that lead down to the turf field. So start at the top of the stairs and go all the way down to the bottom. They did provide us some, kind of, a little rendering, and it looked very pretty. I think there was discussion about possible water drainage down the hill. We kind of discussed using large river rocks rather than small rocks around that area and around the field. I think we're gonna continue to discuss that to make sure that we have ongoing maintenance covered, so where we're gonna, Mr. Capinselli's gonna talk to Mrs. Phillips about who'll take care of, probably not the easier maintenance part of it, but if bushes and shrubs die, who's gonna take care of them? So we'll continue discussion with that next month. Another issue that's been kind of in the media these days is a concern in Lehigh Valley regarding lead standards in water. Mr. Capinselli stated that there are no current problems with the district's drinking water as it's tested annually by our utility company. Also mentioned that we have had a couple of water main break issues, I mean, not major break issues, but at that time, they always come and test the water just to make sure that everything's okay. So he feels very confident that there will not be an issue. He will continue to monitor it. And that's it. Thank you.
With regards to curriculum and professional development mapping, I just want to say Mrs. Waller met with all the department chairs and all of the grade level representatives from all of our elementary schools to discuss the different curriculum documents and their corresponding textbooks. All the information was tabulated and will be placed on the curriculum revision cycle. The current curriculum will be reviewed and revised for alignment with any changes to the standards for the Department of Education, and the goal is to have all the curriculum documents in one common platform that can be accessed by others when needed, which will help in the event of a long-term sub or any unplanned long-term absences by our teachers. And I do want to say that she worked really hard on this. You know, she put a lot of time on, and this has been going on since before we ever took office, so this has been a really big project. Second thing is the summer professional development booklet, which will be made available for teachers within the next few weeks. The booklet will have opportunities for our teachers to earn 18 flex hours over the summer here at our school, and these flex hours count toward ACT-48 credits that teachers are required to obtain. And finally, Mrs. Vicente and Mrs. Waller have been exploring the possibility of introducing a possible three-hour delay for next year. It would not take the place of the two-hour delay. It would be in conjunction with, there was one or two times this year that we could've actually had school if we had a three-hour delay. And so Brandywine Heights has already instituted this, and they've looked at the plan, so the next step is to have the building principals map out two and three-hour delay schedules as well as early dismissal schedules so we can post them on the website and map out the changes for our parents, send out some documentation at the end of this year and the beginning of next year to alert parents to the possibility.
The Technology Committee met on April 7. Under Project Management, we discussed the utilization of the iPads, the one-to-one initiative, and analyzing the data. It continues to grow each month. There's a significant increase in usage for assignments submitted, comments, discussions between teachers and students, and page reviews. The junior-senior high, also, we reviewed for that area the iPad retrieval at the end of this year and how that will work over the summer with summer maintenance, and then redistribution as needed for course work over summer per the students' requirements. Was noted that the students will receive back their same iPad. At West Reading, there's an evaluation going on now of all technology, current devices, the overall IT program for future expansion, looking at bringing in Schoology there, what devices, evaluating the current hardware in relation to curriculum. Also, with Project Management, the district office laptops have been, have been received, and they're starting to phase in that replacement. Under Infrastructure, BCIU has done a full site survey, and the implementation timeline is being developed for that installation. Under Development, the first year of online kindergarten registration is complete, and now evaluating that process for improvement next year, looking at if there was any missing fields, any data, any reports that we need to develop and to keep improving that process each year. Under Technical Support, it was noted that there is one position that is currently open, and they're interviewing for it. And we also discussed our current relationship with Penn State Berks, which will continue with the IT interns. This program has just been a really great collaboration between both of the schools, and everybody is very excited about that continuing. Lastly, under Integration, one of the things is tonight, we're piloting our first audio recording, so we'll see how this goes, and then Mr. Arts will be posting online. And also, he had done a, highlighted a teacher example showing us a video of AP Physics class and how that teacher is integrating the technology in her classroom. That's it.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, April 6 at noon. I would initially direct your attention to the personnel items set forth in your agenda. If you have any questions on these items, please contact me or Julie. The one item to discuss relates to our proposed agreement with Kelly Services for our professional substitutes. As I think you're all aware, we have been having some issues finding suitable subs for our professional staff. We're investigating Kelly Services to see whether this may be the solution to our problem. This would not be effective until next school year, so nothing's going to change this year, but next year we are investigating this company. On a preliminary basis, it appears they can provide us with adequate subs. Certainly, we want to communicate with our current subgroup to make sure they're comfortable with this arrangement. We don't want to lose any subs. We have some fantastic subs. We want to maintain them all. We have some level of knowledge or confidence that it would not have a significant impact upon them financially. From a district perspective, it looks to be cost neutral. So there are a lot of positive signs, however, we've made no decision. We have instructed the administration to investigate it further, and we'll have more on this later.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'll keep it going. I'll keep it going. Policy, we have no policies for first read tonight. We did discuss the social media policy. BCTC has a social media policy, and we do not have a corresponding policy here at Wyomissing. However, upon reviewing the policies that we do have in place to deal with social media and primarily prevent it from being an abusive situation, a negative situation, a dangerous situation, we believe we have those issues covered in our existing policies, and therefore we recommend no changes to any Wyomissing policy based upon the BCTC's social media policy. Thank you.
Okay. I have the ad hoc committee report. We held two ad hoc committee meetings since our last board meeting. On March 30 at 7:00 PM, we held a meeting at West Reading Elementary Center. The committee presented options for electing school board directors, as well as Mr. Rodriguez's proposal. The rest of the meeting was turned over for public comment. Our next meeting was held on April 4 in the CBR at 12:30. We discussed items brought up during public comment at the March 30 meeting, as well as election data that we had pulled together. We discussed recommendations and are beginning to work on our report for the full board. Our next meeting is May 2 at 12:30. And then I'm gonna do the Berks County Intermediate Unit Board Report. The BCIU Board took action on personnel items in regards to professional contracts and position descriptions. We authorized several agreements to support the Head Start Program, pre-K counts, PA Keep Program, and early intervention programs. We also ratified agreements with Excel Communications and Comcast Cable Communications. The BCIU also ratified an agreement for a grant in the amount of $86,110.89 to support StarTalk 2016, which is a language learning through performing arts program. Those are my two reports. And then, Mr. Painter, do you have BCTC?
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Yes, I do, just a very brief report. The BCTC Joint Operating Committee met on March 30. The one major item to report out is that there's been a very positive response to the approval of their budget. Of the 16 sending districts, 13 have approved the budget. There was only one no vote out of all of those sending districts. One of the board members voted no. Last year, we had a perfect record. Oh, well, close. But we do have enough districts to get the budget approved. I think we need a majority, so we have that covered. We expect the last three districts to approve it as well, so it's been a very positive response to the budget. We also had a visit to the, I'm not sure what to call it, the dental cluster or the dental training area. I'm not quite sure what the nomenclature is, but it was really, really rather fascinating because personally, I wanted to give you a cleaning or something like that, or some floss. They, but give me a thing of floss, so I got something out of the deal. But it was really interesting, the level of education these kids receive in that cluster. One of the students demonstrated a dental mold, which is really not an easy thing to do because you have to make sure there are no bubbles in there. It's really a science to do it, and she did it perfectly. Many of the students are going to become certified in, I believe it's Certified X-Ray Techs, so they can take x-rays and work at a dental office. Some are gonna move on for further education from that particular cluster, but it was really fascinating. Some really great kids, really ambitious kids, and learning some great stuff at BCTC. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. We had a meeting on March 31, and there was a couple items that we took action on. Most of them weren't very important, but there is one that's kind of, I think, BAYden we should be aware of. The Berks CIT right now has a really antiquated computer system, and they've been really looking into ways of finding a system that's much more modern, but not a system that they have to start from scratch and build to customize towards how they collect their taxes. They're hoping to maybe purchase one from another tax-collecting entity, and they have been, they actually formed a technology committee. And what they have determined they should do to start as a step one to get to that goal is to spend, and it's $30,000, to do a complete audit of their current system, which really will, will start from, you know, from step one to step 10, how they collect taxes. There's nothing now, they have no formal plan, how they do that, and really can't get anyone to even look at their operating system until they have a listing of their operations. So that actually was for action and was approved, so they are gonna go forward with that stuff. I think it's a good start. I think they have a lot of work to do. The second thing that was an action item was the EIT just moved some new offices, and there is some possible pending litigation with the contractor. There was a lighting that was bid and was not supplied, so they are going to go into litigation with the contractor. We also then discussed some other items that weren't for action, but the bond was renewed for $5 million. It was $10 million. This saved the EIT about $10,000, and it's never been an issue before, and the Executive Committee felt very comfortable with that number. Also, the DNO and cyber insurance coverages were renewed, which is a good thing as a board member. And there was also some additional discussion about establishing a formal collection plan for delinquent employers and taxpayers, which includes partnering with Arcadia Collection Bureau. Fees by Arcadia are 25% of the fees that they recover from the delinquent accounts. They're really aggressively gonna go after taxpayers that don't pay their EIT or their other taxes, so I think that actually will provide a bonus for municipalities and for the school districts. This notice, they also are going to start with a notice of criminal prosecution, criminal prosecution program. So, but this action will need to be approved by this board, so I'm gonna provide Mrs. Vicente and Shelley the papers, so that we'll discuss next month. And that's it.
The first thing under the foundation is listed tonight under the board for approval for the grant for the Domino Grant for Spartan Rises Up After Falling Down. It's a West Reading grant, Mrs. Neuer's class, for $350 to purchase Domino's. That will be a collaboration between the math and art classes, so it sounds like a great, fun learning project. And the Domino's then will remain there for future projects. The next item to mention is the toast. So all of that information now has gone out, you should receive from email. It's online, and strongly encourage everyone to attend all of these toasts, especially the first one, the principal's party. Some of them are, the hosts are sitting right here. That kicks off Friday, May 13. The high school toast is May 20 at Stone House. The Wyomissing Hills Elementary Center toast is June 4 at Happy Hollow, and the West Reading Elementary Center toast is June 8 at West Reading, yes, June 8 at West Reading Fire Station. So again, I really encourage everyone to take a look at these, look at your schedules. It's a great opportunity to meet new people. It's obviously a great fundraising and nice recognition of all of the people being there. The only other business with WAVE is they're still looking for a development chair, so if anyone knows of anyone or if anyone's interested, they would greatly appreciate it. That's all I have.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment tonight? Could you?
Go ahead. Take a long walk.
Sandy Matz, 1531 Jarrett Avenue. First of all, I did want to thank Mrs. Vicente and Dr. Coons because I had some clients from Spain moving here, and they're gracious enough to take us for a nice tour through the Wyomissing Hills and talk to the clients, and so that was very nice. Thank you. I also think it's great that you're audio recording. Very good. And also, in regards to the facilities meeting, it was nice to come to it and have some discussion, and I apologize because, like everybody else, we're all busy, but I was under the impression by an email that I had gotten that I thought we were gonna have another meeting, because when we couldn't meet after the facilities meeting, then all the neighbors, then I thought we were gonna get back about dates. And I thought that was And I thought that was going to be done before this tonight, so I'm not quite sure what happened there.
So should we talk to your neighbor?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, that's fine. And I appreciate it. It's not a, it's just like, I should have emailed, I guess. I just didn't realize that this was going on the agenda myself until later. And then, I guess I just thought, you know, a couple people have talked to me a little bit about all of it, the fundraising of the fence, all of it. And I, somebody had a good idea about maybe, until this gets resolved, maybe fundraising for the tennis courts, since it's costing more than I think everybody expected. We have so many things based on the facilities and the finance meeting coming up that maybe it would be nice to raise money for that right now instead of the fence, since we're still at, not quite sure how it's all going to work out. And that maybe then some of the money that was going to be used for the tennis courts could be used for the maintenance building and/or the STEM project, although I don't know how the STEM project gets financed, so that might not even be. But I thought it was a good idea and I thought I would just bring it up. But I do want to thank everybody.
Hello, Mark Proudfoot, working down Coldwood Mall Road. I've been asking for a report that was promised when the one-to-one pilot was done with the seventh grade. At the start of it, it was promised that you were going to review how well it worked and at least on that decided to stop it or continue it or expand it. Apparently, we decided to expand it because it began throughout the high school the next year. And today, we learned that you were talking about expanding it to the fifth and sixth grades, which I find very strange because it hasn't been shown to do anything that is measurably better. I'm very concerned about the P S S A tests, the reading and math, I don't know, maybe other reasons, but they're disastrous. They're just getting so bad. The number of people who are not proficient in our school has grown three times in math in the last year. And I don't know if has anything to do with the use of computers and focus on computers instead of focus on learning. It seems to be so much worry about making these computers work instead of trying to, you know, make these, help these children learn, that I think that there may be a mis, a mis-focus here. I know that the rollout's not been flawless. In fact, even today, my daughter had to stay after school to meet with her math teacher. I have nothing wrong with the math teacher. I think she's doing a great job to help, but using something called Study Island. She's had multiple times where it's failed and she gets a zero. She tries it again, she gets a zero again. Well, the teacher asked her to come in and do it with her. She got a hundred and her overall grade's eighty-two percent. Is this a good thing? You know, she gets frustrated, three different tests, she gets zero on because she has a failure in the program. And I think getting children frustrated just because we have to use this technology is a mistake. I think technology's fine, but it doesn't have to permeate every minute of your day. The idea when we have a forecast budget in the red that we're going to spend a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars and probably raise property taxes a percent just for putting one-to-one in the fifth and sixth grade is crazy. You know, I don't think any, I don't think half of the people in Wyomissing will support raising taxes to put computers in fifth and sixth grade. We have enough computers, we don't have to have it a hundred percent of your time. Just to remind you, there's a lot of concerns about health related to these computers and Wi-Fi. We've talked about this for the last three years. The idea, if you want to use computers, wire them, don't use Wi-Fi if you want to. Have no concerns about health, but that's been ignored. We've picked iPads which cannot be wired because they only work Wi-Fi. I think that this is a big mistake again and it's just a continuing, ignore all the evidence, which has been growing and growing about health effects with the use of Wi-Fi and cell phones, for instance. The same basic technology, same basic problem. There's a lot here. We've talked about it before. We've brought it to you for the last three years and you've tried to pass it off. You've said, oh, we checked through the F C C and their standards say that this is okay. They don't have a standard for twenty kids with Wi-Fi computers running in the same room. They don't have a standard for that. Their standard's based on a two-hundred-and-twenty-pound man who uses, heavily uses a phone thirty minutes a day. I don't know any of these kids who don't use a phone almost thirty minutes a day, every day, and they're not that big. So enough about the health.
Mr. Proudfoot?
There's just one last thing I'd like to say.
One more thing, because we're over your three minutes. I don't, so.
Yeah, just one last thing I'd like to say. The whole focus I see with this board and perhaps as the administration, I don't know, is more and earlier is always better. And I think it's a big, big mistake. Thank you.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Mr. Christopher W. Heinley effective March 28th, 2016. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Fowler, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Parkin?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Redner?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Hyland?
Yes.
Mrs. Watzler?
Yes.
Mr. Zepo?
Yes.
Mrs. Zokowski?
Yes.
Please, yes.
The Board would like to thank Mr. Heinley for the time he did give to the district. And we are also still accepting applications for his seat until Thursday, April 14th. That's his Thursday at 3:00 PM. Mrs. DeSente?
Thank you. Under Curriculum and Technology, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following curriculum and technology items numbered one through three.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Second?
Third.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Redner?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Hyland?
Yes.
Mrs. Watzler?
Yes.
Mr. Zepo?
Yes.
Mrs. Zokowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Parkin?
Yes.
Please, yes.
Under Finance and Facilities, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following finance and facility items numbered one through three. A board member has requested that we go to item three separately, so I'm going to be asking for two separate motions. May I have a motion to approve Finance and Facility Items One and Two, please?
Second. Is there any discussion? May I have roll call, please?
Mr. Redner?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Hyland?
Yes.
Mrs. Watzler?
Yes.
Mr. Zepo?
Yes.
Mrs. Zokowski?
Yes.
Mr. Parkin?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Please, yes.
May I have a motion to approve Finance and Facilities Item Three, please?
Second. Is there any discussion?
So there are a lot of different lights I could take this, but I'm going to focus on three specific factual items, just on the revision of the plans. Number one, just a reminder to everyone, we are in the midst of litigation, so pending any outcome from there, I don't know if pushing forward any revisions makes sense at this time or is it financially responsible, no matter how little it costs. If we're a penny business with copies, perhaps we're a penny business and stuff like this that could just be cause for pause. To add to that, given Mrs. Matz's comment, I know that you mentioned speaking with stakeholders about some concerns and concessions, but I know based on our facility meeting and our other discussions that that neighbor meeting was very much more geared towards some airing of three years of discussions that kind of needed to happen, more so than substance of the fence. So in saying that, I think, I'm so glad you met with the neighbors. I think that is a powerful thing and a very important thing in terms of healing. But meeting with them again was mentioned and meeting at our meeting again was mentioned. And so revisions before meeting again, not only with the neighbors, but perhaps the police chief and the fire chief on some parking and safety concerns specifically that they brought up, that even the neighbors were kind of surprised to hear that they hadn't think of. Maybe mentioning that this is kind of some concessions or compromise is a little premature. Who's to say option E might not be better than option B? And talking through stuff might enlighten a whole bunch of different people from both aisles on, on what could be something probably fabulous. And thirdly, with all the heaviness of this week, I think it kind of hit me, two-hour meetings, lots to talk about. I mean, the finance committee meeting was pretty intense, I think, from a new board member's standpoint, just what's really on our plate and what's on administrative's plate and what's on our principal's plates and our teachers' plate. I mean, the day-to-day workings of a school district is pretty intense. And I just think that making decisions to push something along when it's not based on any admin kind of recommendations, it doesn't really impact students right at the moment or their classroom environment. I don't know why, after making some strides and being quite open with some dialogue and kind of setting ourselves apart from how this was handled before, that may be asking the borough for an extension, a possible extension, which would allow us time to do some meeting with some people, like the neighbors, Chief Longenhacker, Chief Beal, and fully vet concerns and data so that we can keep this process moving forward very transparently and very thoroughly, because I think that perception is very important in looking back in hindsight over the last three years. So I am voting no tonight to the revisions simply because I think there are some more rich dialogue to be had. Thank you.
Can I just ask something? Jennifer? I initially want to thank the current board, specifically Jennifer and Sandy, for being open to at least have discussions on this issue. I think it's very commendable that you've taken that position and have been open and made attempts to come to resolution. And that goes to every member of this board. I think everyone's taken a new look at this, been very open, and I want to thank you for that. I think that's very laudable on your part. And while at this time I can't currently support the matter, I'm very hopeful that someday I will be able to support the matter. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Hyland?
Yes.
Mrs. Watzler?
Yes.
Mr. Zepo?
Yes.
Mrs. Zokowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Parkin?
No.
Mr. Painter?
Yep.
Mr. Redner?
Yes.
A six, yes, two, no.
Moving along in the agenda, the following finance and facility items are listed for discussion, numbered four through eight. Are there any questions on those items? Moving on to personnel and policy. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following personnel and policy items numbered one through eight.
May I have a motion, please? There you go. Got that, Shelley? Is there any discussion? Can I have roll, please? Roll call, please, Mrs. Fowler?
Mrs. Hyland?
Yes.
Mrs. Watzler?
Yes.
Mr. Zepo?
Yes.
Mrs. Zokowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Parkin?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Redner?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Please, yes.
Board would like to thank Mrs. Gula, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Schweitzer for their time and dedication to the district. Okay, is there any old business? Any new business? Updates from organizations? W A D A, A S P E, Mrs. Zokowski, P T A. Mrs. Weller would like me to share that we held another reading as fundamental event this past Friday. Every first grader got to choose and take home a book. Their Pitoogs came in for the assembly part of the program and of course, the first graders really enjoyed seeing the dogs at the assembly. And I know last year, the dogs came to individual classrooms, so I hope they got to do that again this year. The P T A Fun Run 5K is in two weeks. We appreciate your support and we're still taking registrations up to and including that day to reach our goal. And again, Mrs. Weller's term ends in June and we need a new P T A president, so please call your friends. And then one other thing, there's a special event at the high school on May 4th for our students. The Care and Treatment Centers at East Penn are proudly presenting Anthony Robles' Unstoppable Motivational Speech Program to our students. Mr. Robles was a 2011 N C double A Division One National Champion, a three-time Wrestling All-American, a two-time S V Award recipient, a 2012 inductee to the National Wrestling Hall of Fame, and an E S P M college wrestling expert and analyst. So I think our kids are really going to enjoy hearing what he has to say. Did you want to? I'm good? Okay, thank you. If there's no further business, may I please have a motion to adjourn? Everyone wants to stand? It's usually the fastest one. I got a baseball game to go to. A second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Say aye, opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned.